You good?
Suitcase.
Exactly right. Well, thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll have just a moment of silence for the shooting victims in Uvalde County and everything that went on down there. We just want to have a moment of silence. Then after the moment of silence will be led in a word of prayer by Commissioner Pearson. They remain standing for our pledges.
Our God and Father in heaven, let there be no mistake that we bow in the presence of the great Jehovah, the Father of Jesus Christ, and no other God. We thank you for the blessings of the day. We, our hearts dwell on the situation that happened in South Texas. We ask a very, very special prayer on the families of those down there that, that lost their children and lost their family members of, of the teachers and stuff that, that suffered their life down there. We pray that you be with our nation as, as after this has happened, there'll be many, many struggles on the, on the cause and the, and the fault of this. But may we always understand that it is the fault of the person that did this, this evil thing. And we know by your scriptures that vengeance is yours and you will handle according to your will. We thank you for this opportunity that we have to assemble here today to conduct the business of Van Zandt County. We humbly ask for your wisdom. We ask for your Holy Spirit to be with us and guide us that we will always use a very good discernment when we make decisions here and that we're not here to, to lord over the people of Van Zandt County, but we're here to help. We thank you for the blessings that we have through Jesus Christ and it's in his name devoted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of a Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Called a order of the regular session of Van Zandt County Commissioners Court Meeting on Wednesday, May the 25th, 2022 at nine oh one AM. Announced forum is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meeting of the Commissioners Court approval same for May the ninth, 2022 and May the 11th, 2022. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there any questions, discussion or corrections to the minutes? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Milton. Is there any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted for pay? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner LaFret, second by Commissioner Milton. Is there any questions or discussion about the county bills that's been submitted for ratifying? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. General businesses, are there any general business we need to be made aware of? I know you have an announcement, Virgil?
Yes, I do. We have the Van Zandt County Veterans Memorial. We'll be having their memorial celebration on the 30th at 10 o'clock. It will be at the memorial at the corner of the 60, 243 and 19. At the memorial.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Monday morning.
Monday morning, everybody's invited.
What good. Any other general business we need to be made aware of?
After another election yesterday.
Okay, after another election. The, I would introduce you to a gentleman that's present with us today, Kevin White. Kevin is a good friend of mine. He was elected as Wood County, County Judge, and he's here observing the Commissioners Court and everything. He comes for court occasionally when we're doing probate and stuff. But Kevin, if you'd stand, I hate to put you on the spot, but he's going to do a great job for Wood County. January, I believe. Take, take, take office January the first. And he was mayor of Mineola, mayor of Mineola for several years and does a great job there. Is there any other general business we need to be made aware of? Any announcements? Okay. Being none, we'll move to public comments. Scott, did anyone sign up for public, one signed up for public comments? Item number seven, discuss and consider approve the audit report for fiscal year ended September 30th, 2021 from Pacillo Brown Hill LP, Waco, Texas. John Manning is present with us here today. John, it's good to see you. We always look forward to the report. This is your report card for how you did last year. Where we're at as a county.
Judge and Commissioners, thank you. My name is John Manning. I'm a partner with the Telegrain of Bill. We conduct the annual audit for Van Zandt County. And as Judge mentioned, this is for last year, this is September 30th, 2021. So if you guys look at your bound document and look at page one, remember the financials and the disclosures are the responsibility of Van Zandt County. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on those financials and disclosures and make sure they meet certain requirements, make sure they be gap and make sure that they're appropriate for rendering an opinion. And that's what we've done here is, is we've offered an unmodified opinion, meaning that we did not have to modify this opinion for serious internal control problems or omissions for things that, that should be on the financials. We have entities that don't keep up with things like capital assets. So we have to modify our opinion when we don't do that. Van Zandt County is not doing that. And so of the four types of opinions that we can give, the unmodified is the highest level of assurance that we can offer. It's kind of like an A plus if you're looking at it on a report card. So although we do rely on Sandy a lot, that report is an entity wide effort. That is not just, not just Commissioners Court, not just the Auditor's Office. It's everybody working together to follow the controls that the county puts in place and make sure that everything works like it should. So we applaud the county for, for having that unmodified opinion. If you look at page three, it starts the M D N A or the Management Discussion Analysis, and they put this in to kind of go through and give a narrative of what happened during the year. There's a lot of people can't look at financials and kind of tell what's going on. So if you look at page 25, the other part that's, that's really nice, I'm sorry, page five. The thing that's really nice here is this is the only place anymore where you can look at this year versus last year and kind of see what happened. So if you look at page five, you've got the balance sheet at the top of your statement deposition, which is your assets. And you can see that your current assets increased by about 10 million, a large chunk of that to remember is, remember this is September 30th, 2021. So that ARPA money is, has come in and it's waiting to be spent as of 2022. So that cash is sitting there and it being offset with the liability. So that's one of the big increases there. Your capital assets continue to be about the same growing, but then also those, that growth is being offset by depreciation. So nothing out of the ordinary there. One thing that I'd like to point out is your long-term liabilities went up just a hair, but that is not because the county issued any new debt. That has to do with the pension liability, which I'll go over in a minute. So for a county this size, you have very little debt. I know that's something that Judge has talked about and the court has talked about wanting to try to keep that as low as possible. Again, that position is a little over 24 or almost $25 million. If you look towards the bottom of page five, you can see a summary of the income statement or a summary of all of your revenues and expenses. And you can see charges for services have continued to go up after COVID. A lot of those things dropped just because some of those services weren't available and weren't being done like they were in the past. Those are starting to come back. You also see that you have an increase in operating grants with some of that soil conservation money and things like that. And the property tax money is, is up over last year predominantly because of the growth of assessed value. So nothing out of the ordinary here. So I will go to the fund statements, which is a little bit more of what people are used to looking at when you look at the financials. That's on page 10. So when you guys set budgets, you guys are a lot more familiar with the general fund and the four road bridges, debt service and those type of funds. And that's presented here on page 10. You have, I guess, eight or nine funds that are deemed major. So those are listed individually. You can see the general fund, all four road bridges, debt service. And then this year, we have to put the ARPA fund in here because of the large inflow of cash to county. And that's over on page 11. You can see that that's almost at 5.5 billion. And that's all being offset with the liability and that will turn into revenue and expenses as you guys continue to spend that in FY '22. And that will be reflected there. But if you go across, when you look at and audit, what we try to do is we look what, what's risky or what has the most chance of being wrong? And one good thing about Van Zandt County and counties in general is their, their balance sheets have very little risk from an audit standpoint. If you look, 22.5 million of your balance sheet is cash and investments, which we confirm independently with third party. So we've got somebody independent of the county that's outside the county telling us that yes, Sandy is telling us there's this much money. We can confirm that with outside parties, which from an audit standpoint is the highest level of assurance that we can get. Somebody else telling us that this number is right. The other thing is your accounts payable and those are unpaid fines and property taxes that have yet to be paid. Again, that comes straight out of tax assessor collector. Those reports are very easy to follow, very easy to audit. Much very similar to your liabilities, your largest liability this year at about 5.5 billion again is the ARPA funds with grants. You can't count it as revenue until you spend it. So the money came first. So we have to offset the cash with the liability until it's spent. So again, when you look at this, there's not anything here that points to something that's very risky. Also in looking at this, as we look at the trends, financially, the county is, gets, seems to be getting better and better every year. I know several years ago, not that long ago, things looked a lot different than they do now. So if you look at pages 13 and 14, this is your income statement for your general fund, all four road bridges, the ones that we just looked at. And if you look down at the bottom, your general fund, it, it got over the $9 million mark as far as fund balance, which is great. I know several years ago, that number was a lot smaller than it is now. You're backed up into the adequate number of reserves that, that people, financial advisors want you to have. One thing about fund balances, I think people just say, they look at it, say, you just, you collected our taxes and didn't spend them. And that's not what's happening. People really understand how counties work predominantly, you know, most of your revenues come in through the end of January and then all of your bills and everything else stays the same all year, but your revenues aren't coming in because they come in all by January 31st. So what fund balance is, is it's a cash flow mechanism where when you don't have revenue coming in, there are excess reserves to keep paying bills that are constant throughout the year. So that $9 million mark is huge, having those reserves. As you can see, there's things that happen all the time that are unexpected, pandemics, natural disasters, all kinds of things. And when you have reserves like this, it gives you a cushion to be able to accommodate those changes without necessarily having to go out and get long-term debt. So I know there were a lot of tough decisions to get that fund balance up, but we like to see it where it is and know that that was a lot of work that went into getting those numbers where they are. I mentioned earlier, some of the things that we, as far as liabilities, if you look at pages 33 and 34, if you remember about seven years ago, they made financial statements, started doing what's called a net pension liability, which is essentially your retirement program through TCD RS. And this is as of December 31st, 2020. So they're on a different measuring stick than, than the county is, but we have to report it at that time. And this year, that liability is about 516,000. As you can see, if you look at that schedule from 2014 all the way through, it's been a net pension asset of 191,000. It's been as high as 1.5 billion as a liability. And really all that is, is the fluctuations in the assets that are being held by TCD RS. The main thing that we want to report to you guys is that number does go up and down. But the thing that we like to point out is if you look towards the bottom of page 34, you can see that 98.5, that means you're 98, almost 99% funded, which means there's an obligation out there that you guys have approved that you owe to retirees that are currently retired and people that will retire. And what this is showing is that you have the funds there to keep up with that plan. So we have some counties that are a little bit behind this. So you're essentially funding your retirement plan, which is, which is really good. Pages 36 through 39 are your general fund budget actual. And again, this was in the past, there were some times where revenues were projected and they weren't met. This now, you were about $500,000 collected in more revenues than what you budgeted. And you also stayed under expenditures over on page 39. So both of those things contribute to fund balance being where it needs to be. And we like the way that you do your budget conservative. It's realistic and, and that's the thing that, that really helps with, with budgeting. Again, same thing with your road bridge precincts. All four of those budget actuals are in here and represent, look a lot like the general fund being fiscally responsible and not going over budget by law. The other thing, I think last year we had this as well, but if you go towards the back of the report, page 64, because of that soil conservation grant, those are state grant funds. So we had to do a state single audit under the Uniform Grant Management System. And you guys spent for fiscal year 21, about 1.6 billion of that grant. So that does nothing to fund balance. That's just expense and revenue. So that's essentially a project that got done through using state funds. And but because you did that, we had to go through and look at the checks that were cut to that and make sure that the way that that grant was handled was in compliance with what the grant was written. It was. So we didn't have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report under government audit standards or the uniform grant management standards. So all in all, very good report. A lot of controls are present at the county. Can't thank everybody that helped us throughout this process, but the county auditor is here. She's a huge help to us. Judge Patrick always makes himself available to us to help us. And that's why we're here in May with a full set of financials with an unmodified opinion. So we really appreciate all the courtesy that were extended to us. We also reached out to several employees randomly to discuss broad. Nobody has any, sometimes you go to places like, well, my boss asked me to do this. We hear some things and we didn't hear anything like that here. I think they know that they're just on the top. There are controls that need to be followed. If you don't, you know, there'll be consequences. So we appreciate all the effort of being the auditor for Van Zandt County. So if you guys have questions now, I'll be glad to entertain those now. And also Travis Rogers is here. He's our audit senior. He's done a lot of work with you guys for years and I wanted to just make sure he was here, just so you guys could get to meet him and tell him thank you as well for all the help that, that he did.
Thank you, Travis. I know we've corresponded, emailed and stuff back and forth.
Yeah, he actually exists.
Does anyone have any questions for John? Comment.
I have one on page one, on the opinions.
Yes, sir.
In our opinion, the financial statements referred to the, sent fairly. Is that a C? Fairly? Or is that a?
That's okay. These reports are dictated by the AICPA. They, they make the verbiage be this way. So what, which, which one are you talking about?
The last paragraph, first sentence.
Yeah. I think they just, they're meaning that they're fair in the sense that they're not biased or they're not have anything that's opinions, that's other than what we're supposed to render as outside CPAs.
Got you. I didn't know whether that was a A, B, or C.
And, and the other thing that if you're looking here, if it talks about reasonable assurance and that's from an audit standpoint, we can't say absolute because we can't look at every transaction. We sample, we look at big numbers, we look at, at a lot of it, but not enough to say you're absolutely perfect. We can just say it's reasonably perfect. So that, that fairly is, is there by them, not by me. It's still an A. So. And if one thing that will change with. But one thing with 22, with the audit report, that'll change. They changed the format to, I think what they're really wanting to do is the reason we're here is to offer an opinion. So if you look at next year's letter, they're actually going to move that opinion paragraph up to the top. So it's more present and, and kind of emphasizing why we're here and then changing the order of the report. But yes.
And talking to John, we, we had a Zoom meeting, Sandy and John. We've got about nine months of operating.
Yes.
With that nine million. And John says that, that's good.
It's very good. Cause we have a lot of places that have a lot less. And you know, if you remember a few years ago, when you were trying to go off the financing, the financing companies were kind of worried like, are, are we going to be able to, to, to meet the obligations? Now Sandy says they call every month saying, y'all want to borrow some, some more equipment. But yeah, if you look, there were about $12 million of expenditures in the general fund. So we divide that by 12. That's about a million. We've got nine million in fund balance. So at, at times, that number's a lot lower than that. So it's just a snapshot, but it does point to financial stability and financial growth. So I know there, that was a lot of work to get that number back up.
It was. They don't know how hard it is.
Well.
But it's been a, it's, but I've got a great team, great team, committed, bought in.
You can ruin it in no time.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't take long to make it go away. To build it back up, it takes a while.
Any other questions for John? That's a great audit, John. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. And, and, and I told John the other day, I'll say it publicly, John's easy to work with. I think our process now with Zoom and everything, it, with Sandy, myself, John, it was just flawless.
Yeah, Travis gives them the list of items that we need. Sandy, as soon as she gets it in about a day or two, every single thing is sitting there. So we're never waiting on things whenever I don't. It's just a matter, the reason it takes a little bit is this is, you know, 70 pages of numbers to make sure that they're all right. But you guys are doing everything that we ask for and more. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Is there a motion to approve the audit? Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Milton. Any, any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider the approval and issues of proclamation regarding Flag Day, Flag Day and Flag Week. Carrie Orberton is present with us. Carrie, you may proceed.
How's everybody?
We're good.
We have a wonderful holiday coming up. On June 14th, 1777, to establish an official flag for the new nation, the Continental Congress passed the First Flag Act, resolved that the flag of the United States be made of 13 stripes, alternate red and white, that the Union be 13 stars, white and a blue field representing a new constellation. And over the years, they've changed our flag, you know, when we added states and, and different things. But the last executive order of President Eisenhower in 1959 provided for the arrangement of the stars in nine rows of stars staggered horizontally and 11 rows of stars staggered vertically. Our current flag, the American flag today consists of 13 horizontal stripes, seven red alternating with six white. The stripes represent the original 13 colonies. The stars represent the 50 states of the Union. Red symbolizes hardiness and valor. White symbolizes purity and innocence. Blue represents vigilance, perseverance and justice. And today we request a proclamation from the county commissioners to establish Flag Day in Van Zandt County. And I'd like to read our proclamation. On Flag Day and throughout National Flag Week, we pay tribute to the American flag, the most recognizable symbol of the principles for which our republic stands. For more than 200 years, the stars and stripes has represented liberty, justice and the rule of law. Recently, as our nation has come together to respond to the coronavirus pandemic, our flag has been a reminder of the courage, temacity and loyalty that defines the indomitable American spirit. Our great flag causes us to reflect humbly on the immeasurable price that has been paid to keep it so gallantly streaming. Throughout our nation's history, proud patriots have nobly answered the call of duty when our country needed them most. The Star Spangled Banner serves as an everlasting remembrance of the sacrifices heroes of every generation have made in conflicts from the Revolutionary War to the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan and now wherever in the Middle East, near Russia. Our flag ensures that we never forget the incredible sacrifices our men and women in uniform have made to defend our liberty and way of life. The American flag represents the unity of our country and its people. Old glory should be revered and cherished as a symbol of all that makes America the greatest country in the world. As we honor our beautiful flag on this day and throughout this week, let us vow never to forget the tremendous sacrifices made by patriots from generation to generation to ensure that the red, white and blue continues to fly high and pretty. Today and every day, I'm proud to join my fellow Americans in standing tall and suiting our great American flag. To commemorate the adoption of our flag, the Congress by joint resolution approved August the 3rd, 1949, as amended designated June 14th of each year as Flag Day and requested of an annual proclamation calling for its observance and for the display of the flag of the United States on all government buildings. The Congress requested by joint resolution approved June the 9th, 1966, as amended, an annually proclamation to issue designating the week in which June 14th occurs as National Flag Week, calling on all citizens of the United States to display the flag within that week.
Is there a motion to approve the proclamation? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now therefore, I, Don Patrick, along with the Van Zandt County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim June the 14th, 2022 as Flag Day and the week starting June the 12th, 2022 as Flag Week. I direct the appropriate officials to display the flag at all county government buildings during this week and urge all Americans to observe Flag Day and Flag Week by displaying the flag. I encourage the people of Van Zandt County to observe with pride and all due ceremony those days from Flag Day through Independence Day, set aside by the Congress as a time to. as a time to honor America, to celebrate our heritage in public gatherings and activities, and to public recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand this twenty-fifth day of May in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-two, and of the independence of the United States of America, the twenty-two hundred and forty-sixth. Don Kirkpatrick.
Thank you.
And we'll have a Flag Day ceremony at the Veterans Memorial on June the fourteenth at ten o'clock. Everyone, five, it's a Tuesday time. And we want to be proud to be here.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Item number nine, discuss and consider road mileage for each precinct. Sandy, did you want to address that? Or do you just need it?
Confirmed. We have, you can look at what our road mileage was last year. Provide the roads that were feet assigned due to the history. And roads that, that. Pearson lost, you can see that. And then Commissioner Pearson and Commissioner Lefrand provided the roads that they got in the office and redistilled. And Pearson also lost one eight, one three, two, ten, nine. So page two, you can see where I come from. I just want to go through the official court so it'll get a part in it. But in the past, we kind of tried to search.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the road mileage? Got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second by Commissioners Pearson? Is there any questions or discussion or comments?
I'm just glad that the court can work out this in a reasonable manner. You know, the dogfish, a little discussion on road mileage and what precinct has more and what has less. It's just a good court. Works out.
You don't want any more. I got some more I can use.
That's how commissioners get their percentages from when the tax money comes in, their percentage of the funds from the tax money coming to the recording.
Yeah, this, this road mileage getting it approved, it's going to equate to dollars down the road. Well, thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor of approving the road mileage, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider approved bond for Joe Carter, Van Zandt County Sheriff, in the amount of $5,000. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Lefrand. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider an approved bond for Sandy Hill, Van Zandt County Auditor, in the amount of $5,000. Got a motion by Commissioner Lefrand. Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number twelve, discuss and consider approved bond renewals for Irma Hayes and April Tewater of the Van Zandt County Treasurer's Office in the amount of $5,000 each. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider plat approval for Gamble Kevin's in precinct two.
That's mine. Judge Commissioners, this is a little plat off of Van Zandt County Route twenty-one oh one. And Mr. Gamble, who is a developer and owner, has complied with every rule and regulation of the state. So I make a motion that we approve this for filing.
Okay. You got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner West. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider a plat approval for Lindsey Esquen.
The question.
Yeah, that's a question. Acres in precinct one. That's going to be yours, Commissioner Lefrand.
Yes, sir. This is a small tier two in Fruitvale area. They submitted everything properly and it's good to go. I recommend that we approve it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Lefrand, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider plat approval for Rancho Quito in precinct one. Is that yours?
Yes, that would be mine as well. This is a tier one that's between Van and Grant's Lane, and this one we've done a little different. Mr. Cox went ahead and went to the engineer prior to filing the, the plat with the county. They got pre-approval on it, which is really streamlined. They were bringing it in Friday by lunch, and I was able to get in with Jennifer today. I talked with Mr. Abbott, the engineer, and he charges him the same rates as the county. And so what I'd like to do, I have a tax share in your file, the invoice for Mr. Abbott. We would have paid that out of the county funds that he submitted to us. So I would like to waive the second filing, be it $750 to offset this invoice where he paid Mr. Abbott in banks. So I'm making a motion that we accept it and waive the, the second filing.
Okay. That's a motion by Commissioner Lefrand. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider a plat approval for acres in precinct one.
Yes, gentlemen, this is a subdivision out in the Colfax area, and they've just cut two lots off of a previous existing property. And everything's been turned in properly and in order. I make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Lefrand, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider renewing the Thompson Reuters Westlaw contract for the Law Library in an amount of $1,019.18 a month with three percent year over year and a three-year term. This is who was, I think the contract had actually expired. We actually got them. They wanted to, I figured it up, about a four percent increase. Christie worked with them. Got them saying, no, you just go ahead and leave it where it's at. And then we, we do contracts. They did, left it. That's what our current contract is now, but it does have three percent year after year, year over year in precinct. Is there a motion to approve the Westlaw contract? For the Law Library? Got a motion by Commissioner West, second, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider a proposed MOU between the City of Canton and Van Zandt County for the library. That's the MOU. As y'all know, we signed the letter. We've been through this for a while. Signed the letter, presented it to the city. They drew this MOU up and has asked that we sign this MOU.
I think the terms, I, I don't think five years. I don't think we already go five years out.
I think the letter you sent him shoots fast.
What?
The letter that Don sent him in regard to this shoots fast. I don't, I don't know that we need this MOU.
I agree with that. I think our letter states what we're going to do, and we're bound by our letter because we authorize a letter to court, authorize you send it, saying what we're going to do. To me, that's, that's just a, a good document as anything else. I don't. I'll be quiet.
Okay.
Things get complicated when you draw the lawyers into it. I think that's what's happening. I think a handshake with that letter is just as good as, as it's.
Yeah, it goes back to the contract, the, the friends of the library, Van Zandt County, and the city of Canton. Been thirty years. The county gave up almost four acres of land over there on the west end of first Monday, west entrance of first Monday. And, and we partnered, and it's been a very, very good and successful partnership up, up to this point. And there's a push. There's, there, there is a certain amount of citizens that believe brick and mortar libraries are a thing of the past. And we agreed to mow the lawn and do the maintenance, you know, of changing light bulbs, batteries in the smoke detectors. I think the letter laid it out, what we were willing, what we were willing to do.
I will say, we, we as a county fell asleep and allowed for the city to start doing some things that we should have been taking care of, such as the yard and, and the light bulbs. We shouldn't, we shouldn't call the city when we can change our light bulbs. And so we, I believe we fell asleep as a county. And, and we was drawn to our attention and we, we acknowledged that. Here's our letter of commitment, and, and we're going to move on. I'm making a motion to table if we need it.
Yeah, let me call for a motion. Is there a motion to approve this proposed MOU between the City of Canton in the, in the County of Van Zandt for the library? Okay, my second call for a motion.
The table?
No, is there, is there a motion to sign?
The contract?
That MOU. Yeah, but, okay. Okay. Item failure, no, no, no support for a motion. There'll be no action on item number eighteen. We'll move to item number nineteen, discuss and consider purchase of a new 2021 Ford Edge SE four-wheel drive from Branson Ford in Athens, Texas, for the sheriff's office. Melanie's here.
This is actually going to cover nineteen and twenty. We're looking to purchase two vehicles. Both of them are, one's a 2021 Ford Edge, the other one's a 2022 Ford Edge. They're both new vehicles. We're wanting to replace two Chevy Tahos that are currently assigned to CID that are no longer cost efficient or safe for the investigators to drive. The ones we're looking to purchase are civilian vehicles, not police package vehicles that aren't CID investigators rarely have to run code for something. They don't have to drive as aggressive, as aggressively as patrol deputies. So these vehicles would meet the requirements that the CID investigators needed. To purchase and equip the two Ford Edges with total $76,167.67, which is only slightly more than it would cost to purchase and equip a police rated vehicle. The fuel economy on the Ford Edges compared to the Tahos would increase from approximately fifteen miles per gallon to twenty-five miles per gallon. And with fuel skyrocketing, it's blowing my fuel budget pieces. So this would make, make a big difference in that as well. Not to mention that purchasing the two new vehicles come with a thirty thousand mile bumper, bumper warranty, sixty thousand miles for the powertrain. So that's going to offset some of the repair costs. The vehicles we're looking to replace is a two thousand eight Tahoe with a hundred and sixty-seven thousand miles that needs a front end replaced, which would cost about $2,000. The vehicle itself is worth about $5,000. The other one is a two thousand seven Tahoe with a hundred and fifty thousand miles that needs a transfer case and the front end replaced, about three to $4,000 for repairs. And the vehicle itself's worth around $6,000. We can put those two vehicles, if we take them out of service, and go into the next vehicle auction, which can recoup some of the money spent on the new vehicles.
What was the total, seventy-six thousand?
To equip them and purchase the vehicles was seventy-six, one sixty-seven, sixty-seven.
Anyone have any questions for Melton?
Uh, I do. Where's that seventy-six coming from?
The vehicles themselves, one is the purchase price on the 2021 Ford Edge is out the door, thirty-five, eight ninety-two, forty-nine. The one on the 2022 Ford Edge out the door is thirty-five, seven seventy-one, eighty-six. And then it is, I think it was twenty-two, sixty-one, and some change for all the lights and equipment that have the radio installed.
No, no, I'm saying, where's the money going to come from?
Oh, I'm sorry. It comes from the, from our new vehicle purchase budget.
And we just had the money?
Okay. Is there a motion to purchase the, and that'd be item number nineteen and twenty, the two vehicles for the sheriff's department? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner West. You will get that list to Sandy as to what we're going to sell to auction?
We've already, we've already gone through one auction, but if we take these two out of permission and I'm able to replace them the next auction that we have, then I can put those vehicles in that auction. We don't have one scheduled at this time, but they can go into the next auction.
Can you use the emergency, emergency equipment off the old ones onto the new ones?
No, because the equipment off of the two thousand seven and the two thousand nine won't fit into the newer vehicles. It's more of the.
And those were Tahos?
The ones that we're looking to get rid of our damages.
So when we do auction them, we don't allow that equipment. We do take, we do.
We do take the equipment off.
We do take the equipment off and hold the equipment, don't we?
Yes, we do. We are able to sell the vehicles with equipment on them, but they can only be sold to law enforcement. They can't be sold to the general public.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Thank you. It'd be sold. I could buy my wife once she gets work done.
She's going to retire.
No. Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider approve of check, approved of check from City of Van regarding roads E, East Ohio and Van Zandt County Road one four, one two.
Yes, gentlemen. We was doing some work on County Road fourteen twelve, does some overlaying, and the City of Van's Ohio Street turns into fourteen twelve as it leaves the city. And they had a little section that they needed overlay of East Ohio. So we went ahead and through our interloper agreement, overlaid that farm, and they have provided the check covering materials and expenses that's doing that. And so we're brought before the court except.
Was that a multiple? Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion to accept the check from City of Van regarding the roads east Ohio and Van Zandt County. Got a motion to accept the check from City of Van regarding the roads East Ohio and Van Zant County Road fourteen twelve. Is there a second? We got a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-two, discuss and consider canvas of twenty-twenty-two May the seventh constitutional amendment election. Susan, you want to address that?
And you've got and I have copies up here too, y'all. This is for the population one. Four, the votes were two thousand eight hundred and sixteen. And it gets three hundred and forty-eight. And population two, it was four, two thousand eight hundred and eleven votes. And I guess it's three hundred and seventy-seven.
Is there a motion to canvass the twenty-twenty-two May seventh constitutional amendment election?
So moved, Pierce.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? I'll say. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget amendments. Sandy, what was the, we had a discussion this week about if it was one with, and a budget amendment didn't approve, we would pull the bill? Okay, that's what it was, okay.
That was the trailer that was stolen for certain four. And we didn't have a insurance on it. So we, we didn't have, we had a sure bet on it. We bought that trailer with air funds. And if they come back to audit us and they want to save the trailers and we don't have that trailer, then we'll probably have to pay that money back to the state.
Is there any word on investigation on that trailer, do you?
No. They had two or three really good stops and, and people they thought might have done it, but they were cleared of that, however. It might come up again because we had a truck stolen two weeks ago. And a man called in and two days later it said, there was a county truck out in his pasture. He didn't understand it. And went out there, that was our, it was nothing wrong with it. We took it back, but the guy that called in and the land that it was on was the granddad of the person that they thought stole the trailer. So I'm sure they're looking at it again.
What do we need the motion on? Yeah. I'm making a motion.
Yeah, we're, we're considering a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two budget amendment.
So moved, Pierce.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Fred. Any questions or discussion? What was it? Say hello. Check, he's checked in the ninety-one thousand for sheriff's office?
Ninety-one thousand is the front end from the Renee Bay of Washington that we just completed, Melanie.
I see, okay.
What, what we do is send people out then to increase or sell properties, which is a revenue line. We actually transfer to student checks and enable the teacher auto purchase. We're adding that as well. Now, the two cars are just approved today. If you recall during our workshop, the board had approved to buy three vehicles. They already bought one. Well, the two that are right today are just completing, the three that are completed. So she can come back and buy more cars with another thousand. If they see the need for those. Melanie's working very diligently. She needs to be committed.
Yeah. She does a great job.
And the reason, mind all, the reason, and correct me if I'm wrong, the reason this drug out is they've been waiting for police units and they're not available.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's why she's
There's no truck, nothing available.
Remember Pat Jordan is in the same situation. He's had one ordered forever because we approved it in last year's, in this year's budget. But it's, it won't come in. So that's why she moved to civilian unit to, to get her out of trouble on these vehicles.
Okay, any other discussion or questions on the amendments? Being, being none, all in favor of approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget amendments, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-four, discuss and consider approval of April twenty-twenty-two financial and investment report of county treasurer to be entered into the minutes of Commissioners Court. There a motion? Got a motion by Commissioner Milton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion for Kenny? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-five, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government and approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. Williams, you have any comment?
I surely do. We, of course, this is the last meeting of the month and we have all of the monthly reports in.
Is that a motion to approve?
It definitely is.
Okay, got a motion to approve by Commissioner West. Is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner Milton. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-six, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? The way we want to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Milton. Is there any discussion or question? All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.
Boy, sure gets sidetracked. Nobody wants to go on there? Oh, absolutely, yeah. You, you want us to come down there? You want to come down?
Yeah.
You want us in the picture?
Yeah, we're brutal, both.
Okay, I need y'all to leave me. Okay, ready, one, two, three, again, one, two, three. One more time.